Good evening, everyone. Calling together the planning board meeting for, what is it saying? Could we change the date? August tenth. Just a roll call. First, Larry Hassan.
Here.
James Sweeney.
Here.
Alondas Spinola.
Here.
And Tony Gonzalez is present. I have a new opening statement to read. On March twenty ninth, twenty twenty-three, Governor Healy signed into a law, a supplemental budget bill, which, among other things, further extends temporary provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. The temporary provisions were first implemented by the executive order in March twenty twenty and subsequently enacted by section twenty of chapter twenty of the Acts of twenty twenty-one. An act related to mending certain COVID-nineteen measures adopted during state of emergency. Section twenty has amended several times to extend the expiration of the temporary provisions. Additionally, the old meeting law regulations governing remote participation, section nine forty C M R twenty-nine point ten remain in effect, except where section twenty specifically suspends certain requirements. In particular, when any or all public body members participate in a meeting remotely, the following requirements apply. At the start of the meeting, the chair must announce the name of the member or members who are participating remotely. Such information must also be recorded into the meeting minutes. All votes must be taken by roll call. Members of the public body must be clearly audible to each other and to members of the public at all times. When holding an executive session remotely, the public body must still take all required procedural steps for entering into executive session and open session at the beginning of the executive session. Each public body member participating remotely must state that no other person is present or able to hear the discussion at the remote location unless the public body has approved the presence of that individual. Okay. Try to work on.
See why you wanted to edit that.
Yeah, we, we, this is worse, but good evening again.
I'll take it. I'll take a wing, swing at it.
Please, thanks. All right. Just go through the agenda before we approve last month's meeting minutes, well, not last month, June's meeting minutes. We have continuances for two sixty-two Winter Street, Kent State, and thirteen fifteen Main Street Teen Challenge, so these will not be heard tonight. They are continued. On the agenda, we're going to review the substance of the meeting minutes from June sixth, twenty twenty-three. We have a couple A N Rs. We have, um, first, a preliminary subdivision for Zero West Street. The applicant is Aldegracia Andrade with representative E T Engineering. And then we have five sixteen Pleasant Street, which is a site plan review. Applicant is J J N M K Realty LLC. Representative is Bob Regal. I think I covered that piece. Uh, is there a motion to accept the minutes from June sixth, twenty twenty-three?
Motion to accept, uh, June sixth meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay, roll call, James Sweeney.
Yes.
Larry Hassan.
Yes.
Alondas Spinola.
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. Thank you. Uh, next up, Evan, do you want to take the lot releases?
Uh, yeah, sure. There's a bunch of lots up for release in Amelia Estates. Looking to release lots one through eight plus lot fifteen. We've received all of the confirmation from D P W that the work required to release these is done. So, um, there's no issues with them. They're ready to be released.
Okay. Is there a motion and do they have to say lot one, two, three, or can they say lot one through eight?
Yeah, you can do them all as one motion.
Motion to release lots one through eight.
And lot fifteen?
And lot fifteen.
Okay.
Second.
All right, roll call, James Sweeney.
Yes.
Larry Hassan.
Yes.
Alondas Spinola.
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. Right, thank you. Okay, uh, first, Representative E T Engineering for Zero West Street.
This should be a zoo, but I don't see him yet. So maybe we should go to the next one.
I'm gonna go check email to make sure he's, see if he's sent anything.
I, I spoke to him on the phone about thirty minutes before we left the office today, so he's aware. I told him it was, he was the first one on.
Uh, here. I can't find the link for tonight's meeting.
Ah, okay, hold on.
Is Bob Regal ready?
Um, Isaiah, could you give us the link?
Um, yeah, he. Um, I did confirm with him. I did speak to him also thirty minutes. He had, um, I did show him where the agenda was, I'm sure. I can send it to him again.
Thank you.
Put your place. And then, um, Bob is ready to present if you want to go ahead with that.
That'd be great.
I'm going to promote him to a panelist.
Mr. Bob Regal.
Good evening, Bob.
Uh, good evening. Um, my name's Bob Regal. I'm with Riverhawk Environmental, and I'm here tonight representing the applicant for a site plan review for a project at five sixteen Pleasant Street in Brockton. I was wondering, would it be better if I, could I share my screen to show the, the plan?
Please do.
That'd be great.
Sorry. Okay, um, again, uh, Bob Regal with Riverhawk Environmental. This is, the site is a, uh, existing, um, developed property at the corner of Pleasant Street and Wheeler Avenue. It's a existing convenience store. It sells, I believe sells beer and wine currently. The site area is approximately twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and twelve square feet. It's bordered to the north by Pleasant Street, the, the east by Wheeler Ave. And there's some residential properties on the, um, all the remaining sides. Uh, there's the, the three properties around here. Currently, there's twenty-one parking spaces that serve the facility. Um, there's, there's a paved parking area around the building, a dumpster pad location over here, um, and then a grassed area in, in the rear here with a couple mature, um, trees. The, um, right now, there's three curb cuts. There's two that exist on Pleasant Street, and there's one that exists, uh, off Wheeler Ave. And we're proposing, is it, uh, in sewer that comes in off Wheeler Ave, existing water which comes in off Wheeler Ave, existing gas which comes out of Wheeler Ave. Um, and then overhead electric which comes in off from a pole up Wheeler Ave also. Uh, there's currently no stormwater management. All the water basically sheds uh, from the parking lot in the building, um, well, from the parking lot, excuse me, off to, to the east. Uh, the building is collected in a, uh, drain infiltration dry well which is located, um, east of the building. Um, so we're proposing to, um, they're proposing to, add in addition to the, um, to the existing building, the proposed addition is about three thousand, one hundred and five square feet, which would bring the total building, uh, square foot to, um, four thousand, nine hundred and fifty square feet. The general idea is to, um, move most of their operations into the new addition and then use the existing, uh, building area for, for storage. This current, we, we're, um, proposing, um, twenty-two parking spaces around the building, two handicap, um, accessible, inaccessible, um, handicap spots in the front of the building, um, and then maintaining the existing two curb cuts off Pleasant Street. Um, but we are proposing to, to, um, close the curb cut on Wheeler Ave uh, to gain some additional parking over there and to kind of limit the, the confusion at this, um, intersection. All those curb cuts are close to the, um, to the current intersection there at Wheeler Ave and Pleasant Street. In terms of utilities, we're, we're maintaining pretty much all of the, um, existing sewer, water, electric, and gas utilities on the property. We are proposing to add, um, um, add stormwater controls to the, um, the facility. So we're gonna add a series of, of catch basins, which are shown in orange on this plan. So we're gonna add, um, one, two, three, uh, four, five catch basins. Uh, those catch basins will all be deep some catch basins with, with hoods. Um, they'll lead to a, um, proposed, um, hydrodynamic separator which will go into a subsurface infiltration beneath the parking area. And, um, those, these proposed controls will mitigate any of the increased impervious area and, um, like implementation of those controls will meet the Mas D P Stormwater Management Standards and the, um, Brockton, um, Stormwater Management Regulations. And, um, we provided, um, basically, snow storage would be at the two ends of, of the parking areas. Um, over here and over here, there's still a significant portion of, um, grass area in the landscape of the, of the property. For lighting, um, there'll be, uh, there's some existing lights in the parking lot. Um, but we're proposing to, um, so proposing to basically, um, replace those lights, um, and, and just achieve, um, a, a little better lighting at the site. Um, they'll be dark sky compliant, and there'll be, um, no spill over to the, to the abiding properties, uh, especially the, uh, the residential properties on the two sides over here. Um, I guess, um, that's pretty much it, um, except for during construction, you know, we'll provide erosion control, um, when, when the pavement is, um, ripped up to put in the, some of the stormwater controls, um, there'll be, uh, there'll be a construction entrance provided and, um, some paybills, uh, put a run in the perimeter on the downgraded side to collect the organ. And that was everything I gave. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Regal. Uh, did you address the quantity of cypress trees listed on, on the plant key to match the number of trees to be planted?
Um, I believe I did. Um, I'd have to double check, but I believe I did. I can actually go to the, to the landscaping plan, but, um, appears like maybe I did not. Um, so yeah, that, that would have to be.
Where this says quantity, what is the, is there an actual number?
Um.
Yeah, I, I think if you go up, Bob, this is the fire turn, turning radius. It'll, it'll tell you, it'll have the legend on the left, what the symbols for the landscaping means, and I think on there you have, um, eight of whatever those little blue ones are.
Yep. Okay.
I think you got, it's like an earlier, earlier page.
I'm not fine with it.
Keep going up, go up more, more. There you go.
That was it, that was it. Okay, yes, yeah, over here.
Yeah, so you got eight there, but there's really twenty-five. You just have to change that eight to match the number that's actually on the plan. That's all.
Okay, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, and there were, during, during the discussion with the, um, departmental site plan review, we did add, um, a few extra, um, trees, uh, shade trees over in this area uh, of the property, and that, that number also did not get updated, so I apologize. I'll, I'll update that at the same time. We had an additional, uh, real cycloster on the property on the better screen for the others.
So if I'm following correctly, it needs to be changed from eight to twenty-five on the key?
That's correct. And then the, um, the, uh, skyline honey locust also, uh, needs to be increased from, um, one to three, two. We added two more of those. So I apologize for that.
So if, without changing this commercial building and the three entrances and exits to two, we already have a huge traffic jam right in that area. It gets bottlenecked. I mean, at two o'clock, it's not even rush hour, four, five o'clock. It's all day long. Um, during, I guess, during tech review, was this consider, any consideration given to the traffic in this area? Why would we close off the driveway on Wheeler, Wheeler Ave when people, customers could come on and take a right instead of going adding more congestion on Pleasant Street? Guess it did not come up?
Yeah, it did, it did, it did not come up as a, as a concern during the tech review. They, they would have to now exit out to, to go right on the Wheeler, on the Wheeler Ave, and that's correct.
And it, it's already a nightmare.
Yeah, it would eliminate some of the people who are turning on the Wheeler Ave and, and cross, you know, people exiting on the Wheeler to go then on the Pleasant Street. But there, there wasn't a detailed traffic evaluation then on this project.
And, um, Madam Chair, there was no, um, uh, opposition from, um, public safety.
Um, I'm surprised. Cause I'm often caught in this mess and it's, uh, pretty bad. So if you close that off to make parking, is it, do you not have enough parking everywhere else? Is that why you need to do this?
Um, probably could have made it work with, um, with keeping that, with keeping that entrance, we would have to find two more spaces on the site.
It, it's kind of, I'm surprised, um, Mr. May, because remember we were doing the Cumberland's over on Oak Street, and we made sure that, you know, that road's very busy, and we made sure there was an exit on, on the Walmart side. And this area is actually more congested than Oak Street, so I'm concerned about that driveway.
Well, the nice thing about the, the Cumberland on, uh, Oak Street is that it, it, um, exits onto the Walmart driveway that has a traffic signal. And here, there is no traffic signal on, um, on Wheeler.
Right, so, but I'm thinking cars are gonna come out and at least go right if they are gonna go, you know, to the south side of Brockton or even the west side. They can take a right out of the driveway. Not everybody's going towards the mall or up Pleasant Street towards Maine.
And given your, the size of the addition, it's, you know, you needed to increase the number of parking spaces. And this is a way that they were able to do it, and they put their, um, water detention underneath that, or infiltration underneath that area where the curb cut would have been.
Why would they need to increase parking spaces when the current building is gonna be used for storage?
Uh, because the zoning ordinance requires a, uh, a certain number of spaces per square foot. Doesn't matter what those uses are. It's still.
That's too bad. Okay, thanks. Um, any other questions from the board?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I do. Um, Bob, would you mind bringing us back up to the front where you have on the screen right now? There's four red circles and it says four. Was it B M? What are the, what are those?
Uh, those are Japanese boxwoods.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Japanese boxwoods.
Okay, and just on the design, why did we cut it back into a slimmer area of mulch?
That's, just, just to provide style of twenty-four feet with behind, um,
It's already twenty-four feet, but why did you go skinnier on the mulch area?
Not, I'm not quite sure, um, if I understand the question, um.
So, you know, you got the floor, those are plantings, right?
Yeah.
And if you go farther right, then all of a sudden it skinnies down to a slimmer area.
Oh, here, right here, there's two carwell spaces.
All right, so there's, all right, so there's a parking spot right there.
Yeah, there's two parks.
There's two parking.
Okay.
And that, and those are kind of, um, existing, the existing plan includes, um, well, includes that, that skinny strip is maintained. We actually got a little wider with the strip over in this section.
How many total spots do you have?
Twenty-two.
And what's required?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, so you have exactly the number of spots that you need.
Yes.
Could, can, can we consider making one of these an entrance and one of them an exit rather than two cars trying to exit both parking driveways at the same time, adding to the congestion?
I mean, I mean, we can do that through, through arrows and, and signage on, on the ground. I don't think it would be a bad idea, but I, I'm not sure how, you know, in practice, I guess people would get used to it. Um, but we could add.
The ones that follow the rules, yes. I'm, I'm thinking the one more toward, the one towards Wheeler would be the exit and.
Entrance here, right.
Yeah.
Circulate this way, yeah.
Yes, they would go out towards the Wheeler side and, in, cause this is the crazier area, especially where that
Right.
Road dumps out on the Pleasant Street over there.
Yeah.
What is that street over there where the water depot is?
Yeah, this prospect, uh, maybe.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, it is, it is a busy road and.
So go in on that driveway and exit on the other one.
We can, we can do that.
And Madam, Madam Chair, uh, if I may, you suggested, uh, that other one be as far south on Wheeler as possible, that we.
The, the one to exit the driveway would be the one closest to Wheeler.
Oh, okay, on the, on a, okay, gotcha.
Cause coming in, that'd be easier. I mean, that's, I can't see cars dumping out into, it's just a mess already.
Now, I just, you know, thinking aloud here, what if you took the westerly one? I'm sorry, the easterly one on, uh, near, underneath where it says street and Pleasant Street. Block that and put an exit farther down on Wheeler. That way you don't have two on same stretch of congested road. And then it, it builds a queue up on Wheeler. Cause Wheeler's gonna have traffic coming and going too, so you really have one, two, three spots where traffic is coming and going. That's three different ways that people are crossing in and out, instead of maybe putting the, um, the out and in on the, you know, basically alongside the building. And it funnels it down to only two ins and outs on Pleasant Street.
Are you following, Mr. Regal?
Yeah, 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 definitely.
Just be, just because that street is an absolute mess. That's all.
Sure, sure, understood, um. Yeah, in order to do that, we would probably have to have, um, trying to think with it, with the interaction with those parallel spaces, um, if we then had two, two spaces tucked in the corner and then an exit. Get maintain basically, I'm just maintain existing, uh, curb cut or try to. Oh, and close this one.
Right, close that one, and then you have ins and outs close by, but drop that down farther towards where it says Wheeler on the street as far lower as, as you can go. That way, if you get more cars coming out, there's a little bit of a queue line, instead of dumping it right onto the intersection.
Yeah, just for, for traffic situation, I mean, it'd be, it'd be easier certainly to maintain existing curb cutting block here and then, and then close this one off, um. If that would be acceptable to the board, you know, we could, we could, we can figure that.
I think you got people coming back out of there, and you're gonna get slammed by people taking a right.
Yeah, that, that was, that was one of the, that was one of the issues with closing it off was it is close and exit close to the intersection of people taking a right on that road. So that's why we originally closed it, and, and it provided the space for the parking.
I, so what's the opposition from, to bringing that lower again, so to bringing that?
That's not really, it's just, it's construction of it, closing a existing curb cut that exists already there now, and then reopening a curb cut over here, so changing the lanes and, 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 and making it work and then circulating the traffic back around behind the parking.
I think it's worth it for traffic safety in that area.
Thanks, Jim. Um, Bob, anything?
Uh, no, no, that, that, you know, that's reasonable. I, I, I get the point, so.
Um, Madam Chair.
Yes.
To, to discourage people going out the wrong way, um, I would think that we would want to, uh, tighten up that, uh, curb cut and make it, you know, twelve feet instead of the twenty-three and a half or.
Yeah.
Whatever's there now. I can't see the plans more.
So twelve feet?
Yes, ma'am.
Twelve feet, um, exit. And, um, that direction down Wheeler, what, what direction is that? Rob?
So, in terms of the, the, the reconfiguring of the curb cuts, are we talking about closing this curb cut or maintaining this cut?
Close it.
Closing it.
Okay, so you have your entrance, entrance on Pleasant Street and your exit on the southern, south side of Wheeler.
Okay, so you wouldn't, could we, could we keep the both, these as both entry and exit?
I think, I think that's reasonable, both coming and going, but to limit down in that short stretch of street, three ins and outs within a very short distance.
Right, so, so.
Comes an absolute cluster.
This one to maintain an existing width for in and out traffic, and then close this one and, and put, provide a new one down here and close this.
I think that's wise, because if you get people that don't want to come in that way, they'll take Wheeler and go in that way anyways.
Correct, correct, yeah.
And if you want to make that a, a twelve-foot single out only, I think that would, uh, improve, uh, or, or keep you from losing an extra parking space.
Oh, I see, on, on, on the Wheeler, on the Wheeler.
On the Wheeler side, yes.
Yeah. Well, okay, I, I can look at that, maybe talk to our traffic consultant about the, the best configuration near this intersection. But maybe eighteen foot wide somewhere in between, um, the, the twelve and twenty-four. Um, and then, and then, and then have the area for the parking. But it might, it might require kind of shortening up this, where I know it will, shortening up this, um. But we can also extend it, a, a skinny strip along, along here and try to implement some plantings in, in that area and then just so a thin strip about, uh, I'm not sure how wide, along, uh, the backside of the curb on, on Pleasant Street. And move the opening down here somewhere.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Regal. Larry, Alondo, anything?
Madam Chair, it's Larry.
Yes.
Um, so, um, thank you for these plans, Mr. Regal, cause I do think the applicants, the coronels have done a pretty good job over there with what that used to be and what it is now. Um, on the proposed addition, is that a two-story or is that just a one-story thirty-one hundred square foot building?
A single story.
Single story, so that's just all storage, um, in that building? Is it office space or anything else in there? Bathrooms or anything or?
Um, you know, I, I believe the client is, uh, the applicant is on the line. Um, you know, I, I believe the client is, uh, the applicant is on the line. Um, maybe if you could raise his hand, they could. They could speak to, to the use better, um. I don't know if you can see him.
Who is the appi- applicant?
Um. It's a series of letters, but um.
J J N M K Realty?
Yeah.
Oh, you don't have an actual name?
No, I do, I do.
It's, it's Ba- it looks like Ba- Basho, Basho by Patel.
There you go, Patel is, yes.
Is Mr. Patel here?
Uh, with the owner of the project, if you could, or if you're online, please uh, use the raise your hand function at the bottom of the screen. And.
I think somebody's coming on.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, you should be able to speak now.
Yes, uh, speaking.
Good evening, Mr. Patel.
Hi, good, uh, good evening, dear. How are you?
Good evening.
We're good. Um, Larry had a question for you.
Yeah, I don't know if you heard my question, sir. I just wanted to know. In the proposed addition, it's a one-story building. Um, is there anything else in there besides storage or is it just storage or is there bathrooms, office space? Is it, I'm also looking at the plan, is it gonna be connected to the existing building as well? I don't see any kind of.
No, there is, uh, there is no office or, uh, there is a bathroom right now, but we can remove it if we, we can.
So there is a bathroom in the proposed addition?
Uh, the storage room, yeah.
Storage room, okay. I mean, I'm assuming a half bath?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Other than that, it's just all storage?
All storage, yeah.
Okay. No, that was my question, because it's a, it's a big addition. I mean, it fits. I know we, I looked at this at tech review. I, again, I. I appreciate what you've done so far with the property and how you've maintained a lot of the things around there and I. I believe most of the abutting neighbors are happy with it too, so that, that was my only question.
Oh, yeah, all my neighbors are happy, yeah.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, just to clarify that though, Mr. Patel, uh, the bathroom is in the existing building, correct?
The storage building that we talking about, uh, Bob Rico?
Yeah, what's there now has a bathroom. Without the addition, you have a bathroom now in the sto- in the liquor store.
Um, sorry, say that again, sorry.
The current building now, what's today, does, is there a bathroom there today?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's not in the addition, Larry, it's in the current building. That's going to be storage and a bathroom and whatever else he wants to use it for.
Okay, I, again, I, I misunderstood and I thought it was also gonna be a half bath in the addition. Right or wrong?
Are you adding a bathroom to the addition or you just have one bathroom?
No, just one bathroom. We don't adding nothing here.
Nothing, okay, all right, that's even better than I thought. Thank you.
Okay.
Alright, thanks. Any other questions from the board?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, I have a question. Um, in regards to the waste management of the facility. If that's changing, um, when it comes to like. Um, like, yeah, the configuration of the new parking spots, I, I do know like there is uh, two waste uh, bins. Like larger dumpsters, uh, the, uh, near the old existing building, but is, is the location of that changing is? Um, and it, 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 do they, are they reconfiguring things with that at all?
There, there's a slight uh, reconfiguration of the, of the dumpster area. It's, it's being pushed back um, slightly. And, and um, it's similar in size. There's a, it'll be uh, screened on, on basically four sides. And then there's an existing fence which runs along the property back here and we're also adding a bunch of um, plantings in between the dumpster area. And the uh, residential apartment to the side and the fence.
Thank you. And uh, do you have any plans to add any like smaller bins for customers to use too or? I, I, oh, that's, that's already been in existence.
Another words like uh, receptacles out by the doors and stuff like that for customers? That type of thing?
Okay, great, that's what those will be maintained.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. So is this open for public comment?
Yes, ma'am, if. There is anyone who would like to speak um, about this project, please use the raise your hand icon at the bottom of your screen and we will open up your microphone. Again, if there's anybody who would like to speak about this project, please use the raise your hand icon at the bottom of your screen and we will open up your microphone. Madam Chair, I do not see anyone wishing to speak about the project at this time.
Alright, and that motion is closed. Is there a motion?
Uh, Madam Chair, so what would our um, changes be on, on a, on a motion?
So, um, change the number of trees from eight to twenty-five on the.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would suggest that um, since the next planning board meeting is just around the corner. Um, you might want to revise these plans and just come back at the next meeting.
So we'll, we'll opt to continue till next meeting?
Yes, I, I would recommend that, yes.
Okay, are you okay with that, um, Mr. Regal?
I am, the applicant is, but, but I am, I, I think it'd be a good idea to, to incorporate those changes and um. Give the, the members of the planning board an opportunity to look at them and make sure it's, it's what, what everybody's looking for, I agree.
Motion to continue in the next meeting.
Second.
A roll call, James Sweeney?
Yes.
Larry Sun?
Yes.
Yolando?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. Alright, thank you. Thanks for, uh, working with us, both you, Mr. Regal, Mr. Patel.
When is the next meeting, just for?
September sixth.
September sixth, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, next up, uh, ET Engineering for Zero West Street Preliminary Subdivision.
That is Azu?
Yeah, he's on his way, yeah, he's on his way over.
Here he, here he is.
Good evening, uh, Madam Chair, members of the board. Good evening, uh, Mr. May Evans. And uh, Road, thank you so much for, and as you, thank you for indulging us and uh, excuse my office background. We, we had flooding about three weeks ago and I'm still waiting for the insurance adjusters to show up and the, uh, give us the, uh, green light to start the, we have repair work.
Oh, sorry, sorry to hear and see that.
Yeah, yeah, it's crazy.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, um, do I have the okay to share my screen or?
Yes.
And uh, Mr. May might have to come to rescue. Or E- or Evan, uh, let's see.
Give you a second and then I'll jump on.
Um, let me see here, got my, uh, oh, wait a minute.
Alright, I'll take over Azu. I got you.
Okay, is that shown?
We see the plan, yes. Do you see it?
Okay, I thought I was opening mine. Okay, great. Um, thanks, thank you. Uh, back to. Yes, okay, thank you. Uh, Evan, if you can scroll to the top, uh, so the um. Uh, the top right, right there. So the property is, uh, we're look right at the corner on the west side of West Street. At the corner of Palmer Street and uh, West Street. It features our very substantial frontage on West Street and uh, frontage on uh, Palmer Street uh, in excess of uh. Two hundred and thirty-six feet. Uh, what we would like to do, uh, Evan, if you can scroll to the bottom there. It's a divide, subdivided property of uh, to uh, two house lots. You can see that. Uh, these are fairly good sized lots, um. Thirteen thousand uh, square feet, pretty much would, uh, we try to split it evenly. Um, with uh, each showing a frontage of, uh, in excess of a hundred feet. Uh, the one to the left will be what I call Lot One, will have a, a hundred and twenty-something feet of frontage. And then the one to the right, which I call Lot Number Two, will have a hundred and nineteen feet of frontage. And these are, uh, these are consistent, actually, uh, in the neighborhood, most of the lands are seventy-five hundred square feet. Eighty-five hundred square feet and there are a couple that are ten thousand and eleven thousand square feet respectively. Uh, so this will be, this will definitely not derogate from the intent of the uh, uh, bylaw in the city. As you know, we used to have to go to the Board of Appeals first. Uh, but uh, I think of a, a few years back, uh, just prior to COVID. Uh, the city about changed about the process so that we go to the planning board. The idea is that the planning board is more suited for subdivision reviews and then. Uh, based on the outcome of the planning board of a review, we can go to the Board of Appeals. Uh, public utilities available to boot lots, each one will have its own uh, water, sewer, gas. Uh, and uh, in keeping with the uh, city's uh, new uh, stonewall ordinance. Uh, we have designed uh, recharge systems. Uh, that uh, will take care of a roof drainage on each lot. And that will be reviewed uh, through your DPW. And so, uh, we uh, uh, propose a few trees. You can see those little green circles. Um, along West Street and along. Palmer Street, th- exactly, uh, uh, to provide our, our vegetation in front. And uh, all boot lots will meet the required, all the required setbacks, side, rear. Uh, um, and the front. So we are not gonna be looking for any reduction in the setbacks. So I think of a, this is a fairly of a neat plan. Um, and uh, we'll, uh, uh, ask the board of support and um. And I've been told so many times to talk very briefly. My friends tell me to talk briefly, my wife tells me to talk briefly. That I like to hear myself talk, so I think I'm done.
Alright, thank you. Um. It says here the lot line separating the two proposed lots must be straightened. Did you address that?
Uh, we can do that, I, I, I don't have that information, but that will not be a problem to do that. Uh, the reason, uh, but just so you know, the, that lot line, uh, that is uh, in concern, uh, a concern to the staff. Uh, the reason I did that was simply to try to balance the square footage of the lots. But yes, I can straighten the lot line without affecting the setbacks that we are proposing.
And I did do some research and validate that. The frontage is actually more than the other houses in the area. And I drove by on my way back from Market Basket and looked at this area closely and. Also looking at the plan in front of me. It does match with the other houses and the character of the neighborhood. Any questions from other board members?
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I could. Uh, Hi Azu, how are you?
Good evening, sir.
Uh, so would you have any objection with adding more plantings along West Street? Just kind of filling that in a little bit more, just with maybe three more on West Street? And maybe one more on that corner in between the two?
I don't think there would be any problem.
I think, I think it would be a, a little bit better, um, with a residential use right there, gives it a little bit better of a buffer on such a busy street.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Larry or Yolando?
All set, thank you.
Yeah, I'm all set too, um, thank you.
And um, is this open to public, Mr. May?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, anyone from the public who wish to speak on this item, please use the raise your hand icon at the bottom of your screen. Again, if you hover uh, your cursor at the bottom, you'll see a menu pop up. And there's an icon that looks like a hand raised. So if you'd like to speak, please do that now and we will open up your microphone. And Madam Chair, I do not see anyone raising their hand at this time.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve with. Uh, four more plantings, three along the West Street line, at the West Street side, one more along the West Street corner. Uh, in straightening out the um, the lot line.
Second.
Roll call, James Sweeney?
Yes.
Larry Sun?
Yes.
Yolando Spinola?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much and I appreciate you indulging me and uh, uh, we will get together with uh, Mr. CS and uh. And then we'll get the, uh, exactly the way they want the line straightened and we'll do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I give that. And uh, Evan, can you, s- s- can you send me an email and say that Azu, you were very, very brief, so I can show it to my wife?
It's recorded.
But you're still talking. Good night. If there's no other business, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call, James Sweeney?
Yes.
Larry Sun?
Yes.
Yolanda Spinola?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. Alright, good night, everyone.
I guess.
Good night, Rob. Bye-bye.